Should limit their remarks to new information only. Public comments shall be limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per item. And our first speaker is Karen Sabers.
Access to more comprehensive and affordable health benefits. As you know, teachers are the backbone of the educational system. Every day, they work tirelessly to provide the best possible education to our students, often going beyond, above and beyond to meet the needs of the diverse learners. They stay late for parent-teacher conferences, dedicate weekends to preparing lesson plans, and invest countless hours outside of their contracted hours to ensure that every child has the opportunity to succeed. They are not just educators, they are mentors, counselors, and advocates for the students they serve. However, despite this unwavering commitment, many teachers, like J.C. said about the classified unit to come in our district, are struggling with compensation that is not aligned with the cost of living in our community. As the price of housing, goods, and services continue to rise, teachers are forced to take second jobs, while others are forced to make sacrifices in their personal lives, all in order to provide for their families. It's not just about the salary. Health benefits are a crucial aspect to every employer employee's well-being who is constantly working in high-stress environments. Teachers, also like J.C. said for the classified, give so much of themselves to others, and we need to ensure they have the support they need to stay healthy, both physically and mentally. Currently, the health benefits available to our teachers are not as affordable as they should be. As a result, many teachers are forced to choose between paying for their health care or managing their financial obligations. This should never be a choice that any teacher has to make. It's time we provide our teachers with the health benefits they deserve: comprehensive, affordable, and accessible healthcare options that allow them to focus on their students rather than worrying about whether they can afford to see the doctor and pay their prescriptions. The well-being of our teachers directly impacts the well-being of our students. When teachers are stressed about their pay and healthcare, it can affect the ability to provide the best education possible. We need to ensure that teachers feel supported, valued, and compensated fairly for their critical work they do. I want to read a letter that was recently written to me. I asked the person if she would come and speak here tonight, but she didn't want to get up in front of everyone. Hopefully, she'll be here later and be in the audience. Dear Karen, Teaching is my superpower. It is my calling to support, guide, and inspire students to reach their goals. Sorry. And nothing is more rewarding. However, I am facing a significant and overwhelming challenge, one that threatens my financial stability and well-being. For the past three years, I have shouldered extraordinary medical costs, including $13,000 to $17,000 annually in healthcare premiums. In 2022, we were told that these high costs were temporary and that a more affordable option was in the near future. Fast forward three years, and over $100,000 in medical expenses later, I am struggling to even afford the most basic necessities. I never expected that my premiums would continue to rise year after year, making it increasingly difficult to pay for prescriptions, food, housing, and transportation. In addition to these financial burdens, I have been unable to contribute to the district's retirement matching program, something I had once planned for my future. Instead, each month, my net income is negative, pushing me deeper into debt. Living with a chronic illness means every penny counts, and the uncertainty of ongoing medical cost makes financial stability impossible. It is imperative that we find a solution to reduce the cost of healthcare. No educator should have to choose between medical care and basic living expenses. Our commitment to our students is unwavering, but we need a system that supports our well-being in return. I love teaching and look forward to many years of teaching our amazing students. I remain hopeful for a future filled with joy, stability, and dignity, one where teachers are not burdened by overwhelming health costs. I urge you to make this issue a priority in negotiations so that we can continue doing what we love without financial distress. Thank you for your time, your advocacy, and your commitment to the well-being of educators, indignity, community, authenticity, and service. It's time to act. Teachers are our most valuable resource, and we need to make sure they feel valued in both compensation and their access to healthcare. A fair and competitive salary will not only help retain the teachers we have, but also attract talented educators to our district. Offering more affordable and comprehensive health benefits will ensure that our teachers can maintain their health and continue to serve our students without added burden of financial stress. As we move forward in negotiations, I ask the board to prioritize the well-being of our educators. We need to ensure that our teachers can focus on their students, knowing that their financial and health concerns are being addressed. It's an investment in the future of our students in our community. I am confident that with your support, we can come up with an agreement that recognizes the hard work and dedication of our teachers. Let's work together to ensure that Apple Valley remains the place where exceptional educators can thrive, where they are valued for their incredible work they do, and where they have the resources they need to continue the essential work in their classrooms. I would also like to make it clear that we are not asking for the Cadillac Health Insurance Plan. We were told worst-case scenario would be presented to you. We made it clear that this plan being presented would be one that members would pay extra for. Thank you for your time and consideration. In solidarity, Karen.
All right, J.C. Scott, CCA.
Good evening. Good evening.
I got turned on?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is J.C. Scott, and I'm the newly-elected president of the California School Employees Association, Apple Valley. I apologize that I couldn't make the last board meeting due to a scheduling conflict, but I was able to watch the live stream later on. As my fellow colleague Leslie said last board meeting from Avuda, our bargaining unit is also shifting to helpers for health and welfare benefits. For years, there was no cost. Last year, we saw a small increase, not huge, but an increase nonetheless. As she mentioned, we do have neighboring districts that have employees which are paying nothing at all. Now, we're being told our members on the family plan may potentially going way higher for a cost that is affordable to what could very well become a financial hardship for what they always had before. Ladies and gentle sir of the board, we're only asking the district to keep the costs way down by offering a zero-cost comparable plan and other affordable plans for the health and safety of our classified employees as it is extremely difficult to absorb such costs while dealing with inflation. The district's solution is to dump 2,000-plus people into the second-cheapest medical option plan, where the high desert only has three medical groups available who may or may not be accepting new patients at this time. And this is unacceptable as it lowers the standards of living for us. This will not only potentially bottleneck appointments for months, but possibly force people to have to go down the hill, making them call out of work to attend appointments for their treatment and interrupting district operations. Ultimately, the students are the ones that suffer. Further, members and their dependents who need to keep their current doctors due to their relationship with either mental health clinicians, pain managed specialists, or are currently receiving cancer treatments or in the middle of a pregnancy or other serious medical issues won't be able to afford their monthly premium if there is a refusal to raise their current cap. And ultimately, they will need to start a relationship with a new doctor who knows nothing about their past medical history. What if this was you or one of your loved ones? Over the past month, I've had an opportunity to talk to people who've worked in our district for 10 years or more. They said Apple Valley Unified used to be a great place to work. They love getting up every morning to come here, and unfortunately, the anxiety that this is causing is making them no longer feel that way. Lastly, I ask humbly that you provide direction to your administration to do what's best for our community and that you invest not only in us and your employees, but also in your students. We all love serving. I stand with our teachers' union because, like Leslie said, don't we also work hard like our neighboring district teachers and classified employees? Don't we care just as much about our students? What is the district's priorities when it comes to budget? And what will the budget say about the way you value us too? Shouldn't the approach be to examine the efficiency of the district-like management-to-staff ratio before making it unaffordable for the employees to work here? Can't we find another area where savings can be made without diminishing the morale of the staff and the quality of service to the students? I hope you feel the same way and support us. Thank you.
Okay. We need to go into a closed session to discuss the following: Superintendent's evaluation, pupil personnel expulsion cases EXP number 192425, EXP number 202425, and STIP number 52425, and annual review case AR number 102425. Conference on litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A, Current litigation, 11 cases. CIVDS 2011183, CIVSB 2111303, 2220303, 2218676, 2314073, 2322171, 2412359, 2412687, 2321161, and CIVVS 2400289. Government Code Section 54954.5C and 54956.9D2 and E1. Anticipated litigation, 1 case, Public employee discipline dismissal, release, reassignment, transfer, leave, title: certificated and classified employees. Public employee appointment resignation, retirement, reduction, title: certificated and classified employees. Conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator Jeremiah Harrison. Employee organization: Apple Valley Unified Teachers Association. Conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator Kristen Dupree. Employee organization: California School Employees Association. Conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator Trenae Nelson. Employee organization: Unrepresented. Conference with real property negotiator, Government Code 54956.8A. Negotiating parties: Matthew Schulenberg, Apple Valley Unified School District. Security matters, Government Code Section 54957. Consultation with Apple Valley Unified School District Chief of Police. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All right. So moved by Maria and seconded by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, Rick Raleigh is absent, Amanda Buchanan here, Maria Akpara.
Yeah.
Renee Longshore.
Here.
Anita Tucker.
Here.
Eden, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first up we have our student representatives from Desert Knolls Elementary. Joshua Delgado, Nico Kelly, and Zachariah Garrett.
Yeah. Who? Oh yeah. Good evening, Board members, Cabinet, and members of the public. I'm Joshua Delgado from sixth grade.
And I'm Nico Kelly.
And I'm Zachariah Garrett from fourth grade.
We're, we are all students at Desert Knolls Elementary School. At Desert Knolls, we soar, which means we're safe, on task, accountable, and respectful. These guidelines for success help us spread our wings to be the best eagles. We can both be inside and outside of the classroom. We are here to tell you about some of the great things we've been doing at Desert Knolls this year. Let me start by saying how exciting it has been to start our before and after school programs. We've been having so much fun doing esports, DKTV, STEM Club, art, reading club, and so much more. We built roller coasters, created art, conducted interviews for broadcasts, and learned how to work on our communication skills. My favorite thing so far has been Student Council. Student Council has given myself and others a chance to be involved in our school. These enrichment classes are a great addition to our school day, and they're so much fun. We recently made cool keychains for our board members in our art class. We hope you enjoy them.
This is our first year in Student Council, and we are so excited to be representing our school. Student Council and Booster Club have been working hard to keep us excited about coming to school. In October, we were busy with Spirit Day's red ribbon week and ended with our Fall Festival trunkard tree. It was so much fun, and there were so many exciting things to do. In December, we had another Spirit Week, and our kindergarten classes had a Christmas concert last week. We participated in Kindness Week. We had a Spirit Day for each day, and every grade level contributed to our school-wide kindness tree. We decorated in means to them. Our school ended January with a fun family math night, which was a big hit. There were cards and board games, puzzle, scavenger hunt, estimation jar, photo booth, and delicious snacks. We look forward to many more fun school events this year.
Each, each month, students are recognized for their school attendance with a fun activity. We have enjoyed a movie popcorn party, popsicle party, craft activity, and made keychains. But my personal favorite was the glow dance party. Our school strives to make attendance important, and students look forward to these amazing celebrations. In our classes, we are working hard using thinking maps from TK up to sixth grade. We are learning to organize our thoughts, look at information, make connections between concepts, develop critical thinking skills, and let, lead us to deeper comprehension. Thinking Maps has been a great visual tool and benefits all students learning. Students at TK have been working hard to build our stamina and use strategies to solve real-world problems. We are improving our reading skills as we learn about the world around us, investigate the science of the world we live in. Most importantly, we are working on being part of our school community, showing respect and consideration for others. Thank you for your time and all you do for our school. Have a great night.
All right, thank you. High Desert Premier Academy, Gianna Perez.
Good evening. Okay. Good evening, President Raleigh, esteemed Board members, Superintendent Nelson, Executive Cabinet, and Apple Valley Unified Staff and Educational Partners. I'm glad to be back with you this month. Ms. Buchanan and Ms. Q, also Mr. Holgrief, shared with me their experience with the Footsteps to Freedom Tour. They attended last year. They shared how it was a great experience and how it was easier to understand how difficult it was to become free. As a part of Black History Month, Mr. Holgrief's history class is learning about the Second World War and the over, and the often overlooked actions of African Americans achieve the double V for victory against. I'm so sorry, that did not make sense at all. But anyways, students made a gallery walk of primary sources for people like James G. Thompson and others. This week, our school's counselor, this week is school-side counselor appreciation week. I just wanted to give you all, I just wanted to give all of our school counselors a shout-out. We have three counselors at our school, and they support us with our grades and with life at home. Ms. Nilo always comes and welcomes us into the welcome, into the wellness center at lunch. This has been an extra nice because it's been very cold outside. Next week, the counselors are taking a group of seniors to the Pathways to Success Fair at the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds. This will be an opportunity for us to see the different types of jobs that we could get into after graduation. We will also be touring VBC and San Joaquin College later this month. A quick update on our clubs at HDPA, esports is starting competition season next week. They are only competing for Fortnite this season, but as of now, the students are excited. Golf Club has officially started and meets every Tuesday starting in two weeks. They will eventually move to the Apple Valley Golf Course and get game experience. I hope you guys have an amazing rest of your month. Stay safe and warm out there. And then that was, yes, thank you. Have a lovely night.
All right, Granite Hills High School, Hannah Forjay.
Every week, every month. You got a new job? Yeah. Good evening, Executive Cabinet, Board members and attendees. My name is Hannah Forjay, and I'm the ASB GC president at Granite Hills High School. Since I missed last month's meeting because I was unfortunately sick, I want to give a warm welcome to our newest board members, Ms. Tucker and Ms. Longshore. I look forward to getting to know you both throughout the rest of this year. I have a lot of wonderful updates for you all tonight. ASB held a Spirit Week last month, and we had lunchtime activities for Kindness Week. For that week, Monday, we did wear sunglasses to school to block out the haters. Tuesday, work out your problems and wear pajamas to school. Wednesday, don't hide your kindness, wear camo. Thursday, powered by Candace, wear superhero gear. And Friday, double up on kindness with Twin Day. Each day, we had activities and music for our students at lunch as well. We also announced our 2025 prom theme and venue. This year's theme is Hideaway 25, and it'll be taking place at the Midland Building and Redlands. We're very excited. As for National Counselor Appreciation Week this week, ASB is posting counselor spotlights on Instagram, making thank you cards and posters, as well as getting them a little treat tomorrow, just to show our appreciation. ASB has a lot of other events coming up in the next few months, and we are very excited. Last night, 40 of the Granite Hills Theater students were inducted into the National Thespien Society. The students that were inducted have spent between 20 and 1,170 voluntary, voluntary hours with the Granite Hills Theater program. The amount of dedication, hard work, and time that these students have put in is incredible, extremely on their own free will. Last week, four Granite Hills students participated in the County Superintendent Student Advisory Council. Students had a great time and enjoyed having their voices heard, collaborating with other students in the High Desert, and making a difference. They will head back next week for the second session and are excited to continue the work. Our CTE programs have been very busy prepping for Skills USA. Both students and advisors have been prepping every Saturday for the last month and are hopeful to do well at regionals and move on to state. Next Wednesday, our mock trial team is heading to the San Bernardino County Mock Trial Association Award Ceremony down the hill. We wish our team luck, and I hope we bring home a few awards, which I think we will. Next Friday, we're hosting a blood drive on campus in partnership with Livestream, and we invite all of our staff and admin to come and donate. Our Avid program hosted visiting teachers and administrators from SBCSS last week to visit several classrooms and see Avid in action. It was honor to highlight the program and help other educators bring Avid to their schools. Avid is also hosting their Avid Forum next week for all incoming eighth-grade Avid students. The recruitment event is The recruitment event is blow up themed and will be a lot of fun. Eighth graders will get to interact with high school students, build community, and see a glimpse of what Avid truly is. February is full of events and fundraisers from our clubs. We have Valentine's grams, singing grams, and crochet teddy bears, and a lot more. BSU is currently planning some school-wide activities to help our campus celebrate Black History Month, and our African American Parent Advisory Committee is excited for the second annual self-care fair at the end of the month. We hope to see everyone there. As for sports, our season is coming to a close and we are excited and proud of all of our teams. Boys' basketball finished third in the league and they made playoffs. Girls' basketball finished fourth and improved tremendously over the season. Boys' and girls' soccer are once again league champions. For our girls' soccer program, this makes seven years in a row atop the DSL. Boys' wrestling is sending ten athletes individual CIF matches and girls' wrestling is sending seven. Girls' water, water polo finished one game shy of making playoffs with a very young team and most of the students playing for the first time. We're very proud of all of them. As always, we thank you for your support of Granite Hills. Without you, these opportunities would not be possible. Run and Gray, lead the way.
Apple Valley High School, Eden Piolo.
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, it's good, it's good. Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and attendees. I'm Eden Piolo, Apple Valley High School's line president. And today I will share with you what our students and staff have been accomplishing lately and our plans for this month. Our athletes have been working so hard and succeeding so well. Girls' and boys' basketball just had their senior nights and girls', boys' wrestling are done with their season and are waiting for CIF. Swim, we're having tryouts this week and we have a lot of new kids trying out. Boys' and, boys' soccer won against Burrows and will be heading to CIF. And as you know, girls' soccer won in Division Three CIF last year and, but this year they have been unstoppable and are now going to play in Division One. We are so proud of these athletes and how far they've come and all the ones they've brought us. And Camp's, Camp's crew, film crew, has also been at these events to capture all these photos of our incredible talented athletes. For our CTE pathways and electives, EMT students competed for the Skills USA Region Six competition. And math students participated in the early childhood education competition for Skills USA Region Six. Construction One students participated in Skills USA competition for Intro into Woodworking. And our camp crew went to Disneyland and graphs are working hard, graphics are working hard too for skills. And I know recently they made a lot of designs for tote bags and that would fit into their personality and aesthetics. And I know that, um, I want to also mention our CTE teacher spotlight of the month, which is Mrs. Arredondo, because she has taught so many students about math, EMR, EMT, and our students have shown so much growth in their careers and in their education. And so we thank her and all the CTE teachers who are so dedicated to their jobs, teaching, and guiding these students to their next level in their careers. And this past November, we had our six-year full WASP visit. This visiting committee spent three days looking through all the aspects of Apple Valley High School and met with staff, students, and families. And this committee was, committee was tasked to determine if our school was self-study plan for, um, for improvement, matches what they experienced in their visit. And we were so happy to report our son of all pride shined through and Apple Valley High School received the highest rating of our six-year accreditation with only having to submit a mid-cycle report in three years. This accreditation report proves how deeply committed the staff, students, and families of Apple Valley High School are making our school the best in the high desert. And our ASB seniors, or juniors, had a successful winter formal and it was so much fun. The theme was Black, a night in black and white. And our ASB seniors are having buffet type signups for seniors and junior boys. And we'll also be having, um, Mr. Sandoval auditions. And Mr. Sandoval will be on March sixth, and so we're applying for the event and we can't wait. The theme will be Wild West. And our seniors did recently have a senior meeting where we announced our prom. And our prom theme is Young and Beautiful, which is an old money, great gaspy vibe. And the, the prom like venue is majestic downtown in Los Angeles. And so we're so excited and I know everyone loves the theme, so we're very proud of that. Now, this month is all about love and so our ASB sophomores will be selling Valentine, Valentine grams for our students. And our club letters of love have been growing with other clubs like Son levels for Christ and meeting and making cards for uh, kids in hospitals to make them feel special and, um, appreciated every day. And so there are so many exciting events happening at Apple Valley High School and I want to thank you all for your continued support. And we couldn't give our students any of these incredible opportunities without you. So thank you for your time.
Board member comments, Anita Tucker.
Well, I'd like to begin by expressing my gratitude to our students at Desert Knolls, Phoenix Academy, High Desert Premier, Granite Hills High School, and Apple Valley High Schools for their insightful reports tonight. And one of the highlights of our school board meeting is hearing directly from you and learning what's happening at your schools. Your active participation is not only inspiring, but also an essential part of being informed and engage students. It is a significant step in fulfilling your civic duties and I hope you keep doing this. We want to hear from you. February is the shortest month, but it's also filled with meaningful events and celebrations, which some of you touched on already. This week, we recognize National School Counselors Week, Counseling Week. It's a time to honor the invaluable contributions of our counselors to our students, family, and community. And I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to all our counselors for the unwavering support and guidance they provide to our students every day. They truly are a lifeline for so many. February is also Black History Month and it's an exciting opportunity for our students to learn about and reflect on the significant contribution, struggles, and triumphs of African Americans throughout history. And visiting schools today, I was able to see some of the amazing things that our students are doing. It was really wonderful to see. Additionally, we observed the birthdays of two of our nation's most notable leaders, Abraham Lincoln and George Washington, as well as Presidents' Day. And we're all looking forward to the school holidays, I'm sure, that accompany these celebrations. Uh, in the third week of February, we celebrate Random Acts of Kindness Week. We have Library Lovers Month and of course Valentine's Day. So despite being a brief month, it's filled with meaningful observances and celebrations. And I had the privilege this month of attending, or actually last month, attending classified employee reception on January twenty-seventh, and it was really a wonderful event. I was so, um, it just was really powerful seeing all of our amazing classified employees being honored. I was really thrilled to see such a large turnout in support of our amazing classified staff and, um, the celebration really was just beautiful with desserts and decorations. And it was really great to be able to thank each and every one of you for your hard work and dedication to our students, staff, and community. On Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, I attended that Capitol Advisors Budget Workshop to hear about the governor's budget projections. And a big thank you to Mr. Schulenberg and Ms. Kunkel for organizing the session and providing valuable insight and guidance on the budget. I was also very excited to attend the, um, African American Parent Advisory on Thursday, January thirtieth. This was really a fantastic event uh, featuring Mr. Roderick Figs from the Student Opportunity and Assistance Program, or SOAP at Cal State San Bernardino. And he shared some valuable information about college resources and opportunities for our students. And Ms. Torres, of course, did an amazing job hosting this event. And there are going to be more and I encourage, uh, I encourage you all to go and support that. Uh, today I had, this was probably the most, uh, exciting thing so far, being a board member, is visiting school sites. And I was able to visit High Desert Premier Academy, Desert Knolls, Mariana Academy, and Phoenix Academy. And I want to say a big thank you to Ms. Nelson for spending the morning with Ms. Longshore and myself as we toured these schools and witnessed firsthand the incredible work being done by our students, teachers, and staff. And I really look forward to visiting more of our schools and doing it on a more regular basis. And finally, I want to express my deep appreciation for the unwavering support of our dedicated teachers, classified staff, school, police chief and officers, and management team. You all play a vital role in supporting our students, families, and communities. Despite the many challenges that we face, you continue to work together to make our schools a safe and nurturing environment for learning. Thank you all for your continued hard work and your commitment.
Renee Longshore.
Hey, good evening. Um, thank you to our students who spoke. It's probably one of the best things about being here is being able to listen to you as our future voices in our community and you know, you never know how far, how much farther you'll go, so keep up the great work. Um, I too was able to, uh, attend the first annual Employee of the Year nomination reception. Um, it was a wonderful opportunity to participate in the celebration of our employees that have poured their life's work into our school communities. Um, thank you for your daily contributions and everything you do to make our district flourish. Um, these past two weeks, I had the privilege of attending the Budget Perspectives Workshop in San Bernardino. And I also attended the Golden Bell Award, so I'd like to give a shout out to, um, Victor Valley Union High School District's Heritage Program. It was beautiful to be able to see their initiation and growth in that. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend ABUSD's African American Parent Advisory Committee and heard the voices of articulate HDPA students through their projects honoring Black History Month. Um, I too had the privilege of visiting sites. I saw the wonderful pickup drop off, drop off area at Sycamore Rocks. Um, Rancho Verde, yes, I will be back for your farmer's market next Thursday. And Yecaloma Elementary, uh, they have an amazing family center. Um, it was beautiful. I also visited the beautiful and welcoming campuses of High Desert Premier, Phoenix, Mariana, and Desert Knolls Academy. I love seeing all of the art and music opportunities across those campuses. Thank you to the administrators and staff for welcoming us, showing us around, and demonstrating the high-quality instruction offered to our students each day.
Thank you. Maria Akpara.
Thank you so much. I have to start by thanking the students who spoke today. Uh, your voices, uh, it's like oxygen in my blood. Um, just like to hear your voices, you, you are the reason I get up most mornings to make sure that I continue to serve you. I'm giving gratitude and passing gratitude to the adults who helped you write these presentations to show you what, what it means to be a civic and to be in civic engagement, to know what is happening in the world around you and to speak on behalf of yourselves. Um, most of us are already too old to fight, but you can fight, uh, and I'm so glad um, that you represent what Apple Valley stands for. Uh, I joined fellow, um, trustees, uh, Longshore, Tucker, and Buchanan to celebrate the credible classified personnel. Um, and as the, the others have spoken, the, the multipurpose room was full. Uh, it almost ended up as a standing room only. Um, but my heart was full because many of those people, I knew them, um, when I was within the district. And to notice that your peers selected you. Um, we didn't select you, your peers, people who know your work selected you. I would like to see that for the teachers. I would also like to see that for the management. Um, if we can just have that on a regular basis, to see how people view you, the people you work with. How do they view you and they select you and we celebrate you here? Uh, it is one thing to celebrate you once a year, but it's another thing to celebrate you on, for an ongoing basis. Uh, we don't have to celebrate all principles in one presentation, but we can take turns celebrating them. So that people will know that there are people in the background that are still working. And yes, they are working. But it would be good to, uh, thank them for the work that they do. On February third, we joined the other, um, San Bernardino County School Board, Boards to acknowledge, um, districts and schools that, um, that won the Golden Bell. It was such an honor to be in that room and to see how much joy was floating around. And to see the superintendents and to see the board members. Um, and it's almost like going to, uh, a cheerleading camp. And we were all cheering each other, um, for the work that they do. And that is what this education is about. It's not about I did. It's not about you did, it's like, it's what we did. Because it is we that will make a difference in the lives of the children. Uh, this is Black History Month and as you can see, um, I'm here to represent. I am so proud, uh, to say that I am black. Uh, and I'm so proud to say that Apple Valley chose me to represent you sitting up here. I don't want to submit the contributions of black, blacks, and blacks, um, in your schools, blacks in your community. Uh, they have done amazing things, um, to help support us in what we, whatever we are doing. I hope we never forget the experience those people bring to the table. And I hope we never talk down to them, um, because of what they look like. Um, that you always, um, showed gratitude, respect to the people that are in front of you. Today is, uh, this is February. I have two children that have celebrated birthdays and I don't want to forget it. My granddaughter, um, Addison, um, had a birthday. I was tickled pink because this is one granddaughter who did not see me any different. When she introduced me to her teachers and to her friends, she just said, that's my grandma. When I walk in the room and they kind of look at me like, uh, I don't think so. But she adopted me and I am her grandmother as far as I know. Um, and then my daughter, uh, also had a birthday today. Uh, and I'm exceedingly happy. All of these children that we service, they all have birthdays. Let us not forget their birthdays. Let us celebrate them every time. And thank you all for taking the time to come up here and listen to us. And I'm sorry, um, my voice is going away, but I want you to know how much I appreciate your children.
All right. Good evening, um, Desert Knolls students, you guys were phenomenal and you guys don't get to try and do this every month, like the bigger one, the bigger kids. Uh, but you guys were just, you were great. I know Gianna left, but I had to laugh when she was talking about Fortnite being like the only esport because I feel like I live in a Fortnite esport because both my girls will game at the same time, so no matter where I am in the house, I'm hearing them talking to people and it's, yeah, so it's definitely a Fortnite esports at the Buchanan House. And Hannah, where are you? If you get back there. I'm excited to know that like Water Polo had such a successful season, um, because I know they were really trying to get that off the ground, um. And a, a couple had talked to me at back to school night and And a couple had talked to me at back to school night, and I sent an email to my, my cousin who was the 2008 water polo coach for the silver meddling team that went to, he was one of the coaches, the goalie coach. So I sent it to him because they were still looking for a coach. I'm like, hey, if you know anybody in this area, like, send them that way. But I'm glad to know it turned out so successful, so. Water polo is a crazy sport I could never do because that is a lot of treading water. Okay, I turn this off. So I did want to start by recognizing our Classified Employees of the Year. I know it's been mentioned a few times, but it really was a phenomenal evening. And just hearing the stories and the words that were said from transportation, nutrition services, the instructional aides, custodial staff, and every role in between, you guys really are the backbone of, of the district. And your dedication and hard work do not go unnoticed. We're truly grateful for everything you do for our students, staff, and community. And I do want to echo what Ms. Akpara was saying, that would be great to see it for our other groups of employees as well. So as a couple of the students mentioned, and up here this week, we, we celebrate National School Counseling Week, and our school counselors play such a vital role in supporting students academically, socially, and emotionally. Their impact goes far beyond the walls of their offices, and we appreciate the guidance, care, and encouragement they provide every single day. So thank you for being a source of strength and support for our students. And I was kind of excited when we were in closed session, my watch vibrated and I looked and the like care package of goodies that I had ordered from my school counselor was delivered. So I was like, yes, can get it in on that last day. I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the amazing happenings in our district, whether it's the achievement of our students, which there's going to be so many awards ceremonies coming up in the next couple of months, the dedication of our teachers, or the collaboration of our entire school community. There's so much to be proud of. I encourage everyone to continue sharing and celebrating these successes. Our students thrive when they see their hard work recognized and valued, as do all humans. So thank you to all of our staff, families, and community members for your continued support, and I look forward to another great month ahead.
Thank you. Joshua, Nico, I get to hang out with Nico sometimes at Student Advisory, and he's looking at me. Zachariah likes to say, "Hey, Trenae's here to read." Last year, last year, right? Anyway, I love going to Desert Knolls, I love getting to see these students, but you guys did a phenomenal job talking about your school. We were there today, we got to see thinking maps happening and all the great things going on in several of the classrooms. We didn't get to every single one. I had two board members that I was trying to get to four schools in a timeline, and that means we got to keep going, keep moving. But we definitely would have liked to have stayed longer and we, and I know they'll be back, I will definitely be back. Gianna, I know is gone, but we did get to go to High Desert Premier, we did get to see the gallery wall at the school having to do with Black History Month, it was amazing. Got to see a lot of different things going on on campus and talk to kids. I did have a student advisor there as well pull me aside, and she said, "I've got an idea." I said, "We're on a timeline, can I come back?" And she says, "Yes, I've already told Mr. Smith, so have to go back and find out what that plan is." And I keep saying the student advisors because student voice is the most important thing we can hear and work toward, and so we have them all over the district, and they're working hard to, to talk about the things that matter to them and to change things on their campuses, and I appreciate that. Hannah, I apologize for missing the thespian induction last night for international. I'll kind of explain why in a few minutes, but congratulations to all the students who were inducted. What a, what an honor for the great academy and for all the students that are participating. We missed both you and Hannah last month. Actually, we also missed Gianna, all three of you were out, so it was like new at the podium, and it was all good, and they represented wonderfully for you, so you should be proud. When you talked about Mr. Sun Devil, that kind of made me stop for a minute because that means we are well into second semester and getting closer to graduation, but the work that you do, I know that we delayed one, one time, and we didn't get to see the whole thing, but I'm hopeful that you get that handled this year and get to enjoy it. And then we do have a Apple Valley High School league champ in the audience, it's a female, and so I'm just going to call her out and just have Emily Garrett stand because she's here, and I could see her. League champ, league champ in the 105-pound girls wrestling, and the girls team took league as well. So pretty cool, you guys. Emily, it was not your mom. I had to release your mom to go watch it, so I knew about it way back when it happened. So when I saw your brother, I'm like, oh, and Emily's sitting right there, I can go after this. So congratulations, you made us all proud. Kindness Week is being celebrated at different times, different places, different ways, but last week during a superintendent meeting, I happened to open my email, don't tell the other superintendents that I looked at my email while I was in a meeting, and there was an email from an eighth grader at Mariana Academy that just stopped me. And he just wanted to tell me thank you and wrote this lovely email. And so when we were at Mariana today, I asked Ms. Lasko if we could find Jonathan and I could meet him face to face because I had responded to his email that I hoped to meet him in person because he had made my day, and sometimes just a few words change people's lives. In celebration of Black History Month last year, I challenged people to, did you know, go find something that you didn't know about somebody in history that had changed something? And so Madam CJ Walker in 1910 was born a cotton plantation, on a cotton plantation in Louisiana and became the first millionaire, female millionaire, by producing hair care products. And so I think that's cool, the History Channel, I did tell a teacher today, he's back there, that the History Channel has some amazing things going on right now, and he said he didn't have that channel. I said, "You can get it on the internet, you can watch it." So all the students out there, pull it up, go to the different categories and look at somebody and find out about their history and learn about them, it's powerful. And then the Classified Employee of the Year has been mentioned, but I'd like to call out the names here. Sherri Nelson in Transportation, no relation, but she's wonderful. Ray Wolf, Para Professional. Alex Serrano, Food and Nutrition Services. Valerie Burrell, Security. Dana Beller, Technical. Lester Tompkins, Custodial and Maintenance. Amber, Amber Abney, Health Services. And Jessica David, Clerical and Administrative. What a wonderful evening. We filled the multipurpose room, and again, Kristin Dupree in the back along with Jeremiah Harrison and the rest of the HR staff made this happen along with everybody that nominated, over 100 nominations of classified staff within the district, so pretty amazing. We are planning to do a celebration for certificated. We have tried the Teacher of the Year process that goes along with the county. We've had teachers attempt that, it's like a dissertation. One did it one year and had to try again the next year because of just the length of the application, and so we're going to try something a little different internally, and then if they want to move forward to the county process and state process, we certainly will support them to do that. We will have an FFA presentation next board meeting, March, not the special board meeting. They're ready to come in, they were ready tonight, but Mr. Raleigh wasn't going to be here, and since he asked for it, I thought we probably should do it when he's available. And then finally, as Hannah mentioned, mock trial. I'm currently living it. So while I got to go and go to a few schools today, I reported for jury duty on Monday and have been there ever since, and I am on a case, so I will be continuing, which is why I didn't go last night because I, I don't know that I can put another thing on my plate. Well, I'm tired. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a mental, it's a different kind of mental, so. But having been to mock trial, I feel very comfortable, but I wish I was sitting in the audience watching all of our students do mock trial. Thanks, have a great evening.
All right, at this point, we can go ahead and dismiss the students, yeah? So you guys can all take off, I know it's eight o'clock, get home, finish any homework you might have. Have a good night. Bye. Thank you, guys.
I did, I have a picture. She sent me a picture that day. Yeah. See you later. Bye, even. Bye, Zach. Bye, Nick. These are darling. So excited.
I don't think so. All right. California School Employees Association, CSEA, J.C. Scott. Is he here?
Good evening again. As I stated before, I've been talking to members and getting acclimated to my new position as the CSEA president. The goals of my term is develop a collaborative relationship with the district without compromising the rights of my members. I'd like to thank Superintendent Nelson, Assistant Superintendent Conrad, and Human Resources Director, Ms. Dupree, for being so welcome to me at the beginning of the school year, and I look forward towards working together with them to help resolve issues and get things done so we can focus mainly on what is important to all of us, which is our students and the community. Thank you again, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Apple Valley Unified Teachers Association, Avuda, Karen Sabers.
I'm back. And I apologize because when I started the last speech, I just started into the speech and didn't say good evening, so I apologize. Good evening, Superintendent Nelson, board members, cabinet, and audience. I hope this evening finds you well. It's an honor to be here tonight again, and I'd like to take a moment to share some important updates from my recent experience at the California Teachers Association State Council. A few weekends ago, I had the privilege of attending this event where I was updated on several key initiatives and legislative actions that CTA is currently supporting. One of the major focuses for CTA is a renewal of Proposition 55, which is set to expire in 2030. While there is still time before it expires, this proposition plays a crucial role in providing significant funding to school districts across California. The renewal of Proposition 55 would ensure that our schools continue to receive the financial support necessary to maintain and improve education for our students. Additionally, CTA is diligently working on to support out-of-state teachers by advocating for automatic preliminary credentials when they move to California. This will help address the teacher shortage by streamlining the process for qualified educators into, that come into and enter in our workforce. Another important piece of legislation currently on the table is Assembly Bill 65. This bill addresses pregnancy leave, proposing 14 weeks of paid leave for teachers. If passed, this bill would allow educators to take the time they needed during pregnancy without sacrificing their income. It would also close the significant gap on the retirement gap between men and women, which currently stands over $100,000. Lastly, we were informed about Assembly Bill 86, which aims to implement health education for students in grades K through 8th. If adopted, this bill would go into effect in 2028. Last Tuesday, I had the privilege of meeting with Cabinet alongside Tim and Leslie. It was wonderful opportunity to continue building the relationships between Avuda, CSEA, and Cabinet. Unfortunately, Ms. Nelson was not there, Superintendent Nelson. The meeting was incredibly productive, and it was especially exciting to welcome J.C. for the first time as the new CSEA president. Avuda is eager to continue, continuing to strengthen the collaboration with CSEA as we believe working together will better serve the needs of our teachers, classified employees, and students. On another note, I'm happy to report that Avuda has successfully delivered our new Avuda shirts to most of our members, so you can expect to see more red in the future as we see in our audience. Thank you for your support because this symbolizes our unity and support for educators. Many of our teachers are also looking forward to the upcoming Good Teacher Conference in March. We've had numerous teachers reach out expressing their excitement to attend. Additionally, it's worth noting that a few of our own members will be presenting at the conference this year, which is fantastic news for our district and a testament of the incredible expertise and leadership within our teaching staff. Finally, we are looking ahead to tomorrow's negotiations. We are optimistic about continuing the interspace bargaining process, and we look forward to working collaboratively to come up with, to come up to agreement on the articles we will be addressing, and we appreciate Jeremiah's willingness to facilitate those sessions. Thank you for your time tonight, and I hope everybody has a great three-day weekend.
Okay. No action was taken in closed session, so we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. The board may approve the agenda as is or add and/or pull from the consent agenda for discussion and/or action. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Don't we pull it later?
You can, you can. You're right now just approving.
Now we're just approving the agenda.
And then when you get to those sections, if you want to pull.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Our first discussion information item is going to be independent charter information.
Mr. Soss. Thank you. I'll just do this one from here. I don't have a presentation so much as just a review of some of the elements of our current charter agreement with the Academy for Academic Excellence and some direction for how we would like to proceed with kind of gathering information from them and what information and what frequency. So the background to this item details a couple of things. Kind of our responsibilities as the charter authorizer. One is listed there, we do have to designate a staff member, and bless you. What, what we do in that case, because it's part of our charter to supply a member of their board, we accomplish that requirement by doing that. And so I actually at the moment do sit as the district representative to AAE. Following then, we do have to conduct school site visits, which we do. I happen, you know, I, I often am the one to do that because I'm there already for board meetings. We do have to maintain, make sure they complete things like the LCAP, and then the midterm review, and the SARCs. And so we do conduct that oversight, and then the following one, very similarly, they do submit their budget to Cindy, who does review their budget, Cindy Kunkel. And then finally, at the time of renewal, we do have to provide to the California Department of Education one of three answers, whether they've been renewed, whether they've not been renewed, or whether they are for some reason going to cease operation. And so at the time of renewal, we do that, and we actually file that with the CDE. Their term feels long because it was kind of automatically renewed, and the current term is set to end in 2028. And so we are a little bit out from the renewal petition timeline, but that does not keep us from inviting or requesting that they provide to us information on any number of metrics that the board selects. So that's a little background, and I'll kind of maybe listen to some discussion and give, and receive direction on how to establish that report.
Well, I do have a question regarding that. When you look on the district website... When you look on the district website, it did state that their renewal was that their their renewal was due on June of 2025. That's what the district website said. So if it was extended to 2028, did the board approve?
The board did not. That extension came as a result of an automatic extension due to some COVID delays. And so I went straight to the CDE Charter Timeline page and took that from the CDE. So we had no we had no option to change the timeline. It was changed by virtue of the executive action at the CDE level based on some temporary rules that were in place because of COVID.
So before they were approved the last time, there were conditions that were in place. Where are they on meeting those conditions regarding enrollment and special education? What is their position? What have they done so far since the last time? Because I was sitting on this board when that last time occurred. So I just I'm curious about where there are. Are they are their doors open for students who have special needs? And what how are they enrolling students in their program? Do you have to wait till you find out you're pregnant to sign up to go to that school as they've always done? I'm kind of curious.
So maybe reports on things like their enrollment process, their demographic makeup, and the process for students with special needs?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything else anybody wants to add or ask?
Yes, I have a question, being new to the board. When was the last time the board renewed that charter?
I just looked at this. I'm sorry. I think it was 20, the 1920 school year right before closure.
My first year.
It would have been they were up for a five-year, and it would have been five.
Yeah, March of 24 or 20, March 24th of 20.
Right as we were closing.
Yeah.
And so again.
It was at the April of 2020 board meeting, April 9th is we have the certs.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for looking that up, Kylie. And and again, and that's normal would have been a five-year. They would have been up for renewal now, but the extension was without. We had no say in that extension as a as an authorizer, nor did authorizers throughout the state. Now, there are schools that are just coming up now. In fact, the Lewis Center's other school is currently going through the charter petition process for the Norton Science and Language Academy.
And that's a county charter.
They are not chartered with us. That's right. They are chartered through San Diego County Superintendent Schools. But I think those three items, if that's the direction of the board, we could develop. And then I maybe just can work with the superintendent to determine when that report would be best made. Okay, good. Any other topics for that? Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP mid-year review presentation, also Mr. Sloss.
No, not that. Okay.
So this one will be easier from here. You do have these slides up from you, and there is a second document. That second document is the midterm review in its template provided by kind of a statewide company called Document Tracking System. And so I won't be going through all of that, but what it contains essentially all of the required reports, which are the metrics that were approved by our community and the board last June for each. Well, there's metrics within each goal, and then there's actions within each goal. So the metrics have been updated when available. So, for example, CASP scores are updated. You've seen much of this data in the format provided at the state of the district. However, there's a great deal more detail in this particular format because the individual student groups and schools' scores have to be included. So there's lots and lots of detail in this document. And so that's been posted to the district website for the public under the LCAP related pages. But I'm going to go over just a brief summary and especially focus on the level of the mutation rates both and also the expenditures as it's about the middle of the year. And so just remember the background of this presentation. Even though we already had our statement of the district is that the Senate requires that a midterm review be made before February 2018. And so that must be a non-consent item to the board, such as discussion information. We're taking no action tonight. We're not approving anything. It's simply a report. Our cycle, however, is that we're kind of always either evaluating our programs, bringing in priorities for new programs, implementing them, and then again reevaluating them. So we're kind of in that constant loop. Remember that the board carefully took action along with the community last spring to align our LCAP and our board goals. And so those first three are board goals and LCAP goals that are aligned. Those are some you're very familiar with those three sets of ideas. Goal four and five that you'll notice are not the goal four. Our goal four for the board is non-annual responsibility or fiscal responsibility. By statute, goal four and five have to be our equity multiplier school goals. And so we lumped our two alternative schools together because they did very like things. And so High Desert Premier Academy and Apple Valley Virtual Academy have continued their equity multiplier efforts, and we go forward. And then Phoenix Academy can go forward. They're not hearing me on the screen, but. What's that? Yeah, yeah.
I can't believe someone was on the stream to notice that. And so the goals and action are in a structure that's a numbered structure. Goal one, action one would be 0101. Goal three, action three would be 0304. And so the way this is reported is a quick table, action number, a quick summary taken straight out of the language in the document, a progress note, which is by statute, simply whether it's been fully, partially implemented, where it's in the planning stages or it's not implemented. The budgeted expenditures is how much we thought we were going to spend, and the actuals as of mid-year are how much we've spent so far. And of course, we want to see that number be about half. So you'll see the budgeted expenditures be a certain amount. And if we're kind of halfway through the year, we should see that expended amount be roughly half in most cases. We're back, okay. And so we'll start with goal one. These goals are all fully implemented. And by that, essentially, what we're saying is we've been able to hire the staff, put them in place. Yeah, good to go. And or purchase the materials that were required. And so in the cases of these first goal one, these first six, you see that as you kind of go down the line, there's essentially in all places, either it's been about half expended or places where a lot of the expenses were upfront, like school climate supports, then that is already expended a little bit more than half. But we are on track not to overspend any of those. So that's kind of just the update on the actions. These are implemented, for example. A good example for this is mental health supports. In our first LCAP in 2013, we had a similar goal. We were unable to fully implement that goal that year. We were unable to fully fill all positions. And so we had to report. Had we had we done a media report that year, we would have reported partial. Goal two has a little bit more actions. And so you'll see there, I'll just highlight a couple of things. There we're on track. We are a little overspent in Avid. That's a very small goal, but that's a very important thing. And so we will have to move some things around. Again, that's a small dollar amount for our roughly $43 million LCAP. But we have done a good job of making sure and getting some students to some field trips and other activities this year. Nothing else there that's out of the range. Here's where we have some interest. 0207 is our ELOP and really all after-school and extended learning programs, and that includes summer school. Our budgeted expenditures there include all ELOP funds, which far exceed what we have not spent half of those on this year's students. A good portion of these funds will be spent in summer. And so those we will have more costs that come. And also remember, some of our ELOP funds can be used for other things like making sure we have classroom space for ELOP programs. And so we have, we are reporting not just supplemental and concentration grant funds there, but all ELOP funds. And so those funds that we that is all funds in the LCAP, which we did have LCFF funds that were not categorical, that for years have been there for after-school programs for grade seven through 12 now. But also, it does include the TK6 funds. The rest of the funds are essentially on track to be halfway expended or to be fully expended at the end of the year. Goal three, family centers, again, roughly on track and fully implemented programs. And then we reached the goals that are very school-focused. HDPA and Apple Valley Virtual have both added a counselor to their program. They have increased interventions by adding either a teaching position in one case or added other after-school supports or tutoring. And then expanded learning, they both have done quite a bit of that, obviously, and they're kind of what they've purchased is is on they're done spending for this year, but they've been able to do some things for students, the rest of which will fall to goal 0402. And then Phoenix Academy actually has two small, two programs, one very large school program and a small preschool program that is a special ed preschool housed at that site, and they qualified also. And so they lumped those goals into three main categories. They did add a clinical therapist to their school site, Tanya Babbitt. And so they're able to implement that program as well as some other online supports for students. And the student intensive interventions are the Student Champions. And that's also happening at High Desert Premier. And these are staff members who have agreed to essentially be highly trained mentors to put in place some special supports for students at risk. And then finally, the academic intervention and training fully implemented. And it's worth noting, however, that if they do not expend these equity multiplier funds, they do carry over. A quick note, these schools did qualify for these same funds, except for the preschool program for next year, with the addition of another school who will be added, Yucaloma. The metrics are provided. I could not think of a way to put these into a slide deck that didn't wasn't dizzyingly full of numbers, but I did want to make sure you had those. They are mostly been reviewed at state of the district, but this has more detail. We will be reviewing these in great detail with each school team on February 24th, parents and staff. And so they'll take a look at this data in rich detail. And so that's what we are we'll end with. We'll have our final student advisory meetings. We'll have the district advisory on February and March. And then the plan that gets approved in March by the community comes to you in June, first for a hearing for the public, and then our second June meeting for board approval. Lots of information to come as we go, but remember, this is the year two now of a three-year LCAP. And so we've built this plan. We're reporting on it in the middle of year one. And then now we're setting up to make sure we're updating it for year two. And that's all I have.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I know on some of them that went over, you said that the spending was done.
Yeah.
For the Avid one, will there be more? Because I know there's usually a lot.
There will be other funds that will probably be district Title I or other categoricals. So they've spent all of their supplemental and concentration allotment, but there will be other supports that we have set aside for them.
Okay, so they're not like halfway?
No, and they're not going to anything they have planned. And again, mostly, these are school site costs. Mostly, their single school plans at the site have covered things like the big field trips that are coming. But these are some other things we do, like making sure we have cash for college nights. So they we have enough funding to cover those remaining items.
Good, okay. That's what I was worried about. Is there going to be enough to?
There's going to be enough, yes. Thank you.
All right. Presentation on the Governor's Proposal for the 2025-26 State Budget and K-12 Education.
Thank you. Give me a second to try and grab the screen up here. Okay, I think I might need some IT assistance. Greg?
Please.
Click.
Screen you up. Now it comes up. I'm scared. You are awesome.
Oh, conference A.
There it is.
All right, there it is. Disclaimer. Ms. Buchanan and Ms. Opara, my apologies. You suffered through some of these same slides at the Budget Committee meeting. This is a much abbreviated presentation this evening. So these are produced by School Services. I had the opportunity to attend along with, I believe Karen was there, Leslie McNanley, and I do believe CSEA had a couple reps at that School Services presentation. This is for next year. This is the Governor's Proposal for the 25-26 Fiscal Year. You did get at your you'll see this. I paper clipped all my presentations together this evening. This one on top. I also included, for your information, School Services had this graphic on their website. It's just a little graphic that talks about navigating the state budget process in California, produced by the California Budget and Policy Center. It's an older document. I think it's about 2015, but it's still accurate. The state has not adjusted their budget process. So that's an informational piece for you to peruse at your leisure. In the Governor's Proposal, you know, some some good things. California is pretty resilient. There's some good things going on in terms of the economy, in terms of state revenues. Some of you might remember the governor tried to pull a maneuver. That's what they called it into this year by manipulating Prop 98. That maneuver did not necessarily occur thanks to some some great efforts by some of our partners across the state of California. However, he is attempting something else for this year. He's attempting to underappropriate Prop 98 in the current year by about $1.6 billion. So that's been called into question. I don't think a lot of people are happy with that. But again, this is merely a proposal, many steps left in the budget process. California is continuing to grow, and and that's a good thing. You'll see there in the middle of that slide, the governor is actually projecting about a $17 billion surplus over the three-year budget cycle. And the three-year budget cycle, when we're looking at next year, believe it or not, it goes back and then it hits the budget year, and then it hits, I'm sorry, it goes back to last year. Then it's this year, and then it's the budget year because the state trues up last year's revenues as part of this budget proposal, revises their revenue estimates for this year as part of this budget proposal, and then creates their revenue estimates for next year. Again, Prop 98 is the bright spot. As long as that maneuver doesn't happen, the underappropriation in the current year. One thing that the governor had done in previous years is he used some one-time money to kind of prop up the LCFF, and and that that's gone. He's using ongoing revenues at the state level to maintain Prop 98 funding for our for our schools. Significant one-time discretionary resources. That is in reference to a discretionary block grant that Governor Newsom has proposed to the tune of about $1.8 billion. A little more information came out regarding that with the Budget Trailer Bill language. They're proposing discretionary funding to school districts at a little over $300 per ADA. When that bulletin was released, Cindy walked into my office, put a little Post-it note on my office and said equals about $4 million. Now, that is merely a proposal. That is not part of the budget budget at this point. And you'll see later on, School Services recommends to not include that in your second interim.
And you'll see later on, school services recommends to not include that in your second interim. And or your budget adoption process until it is in fact approved at the state level. This is just a, it's, it's a busy slide and I apologize, but what this talks about is last year, current year and next year, the different revenue forecasts. You have the enacted budget, there is in the dark blue on the left, that's, that's the enacted budget in the current year. So it looked back, it looked at this year and it looked at next. The, the LAO fiscal outlook, again, that's the Legislative Analyst Office, that's an advisory group to the legislature. They don't work for the governor, they work for, they work for the legislatures, there's a nonpartisan group. The Department of Finance is the governor's finance branch up in Sacramento. And then of course, in the green is what the governor has proposed, and these are the revenues that the governor has used in his budget proposal. You'll see the sales and use tax is fairly consistent across the three, the enacted budget, the LAO and the governor's. Corporation tax has some variance. The personal income tax, that is the largest piece of tax revenue at the state. And you'll see the governor's estimates for revenue going back a year and in the current year and also to next year. There's some significant differences and they are quite a bit higher than the LAO. Or what was enacted for the current year. So that's something to, to watch. I hope the governor's projections come true. This is a quick look at Prop 98 in the education budget, compares it to state revenues, the top gray bar is state revenues. Had a big peak in 21, 22, you remember, we were very worried coming out of the, the pandemic that the economy would crash, it would continue to falter. But the state experienced some of the largest economic growth coming out of that. You can see that spike in revenues, 22, 23, you kind of, I'd say corrected, but almost overcorrected at the state level. But the economy's been chugging away. And you'll look at next year in, sorry, you look at this year, 24, 25, the 119.2 billion there, that's the fully funded Prop 98 level. Not the governor's proposal to under appropriate Prop 98 in the 24, 25 year. And you'll see next year, growing state revenues and about a level Prop 98 funding into next year. This is a slide that just talks about that under appropriation, it just kind of details it enacted. In the current year, we, the governor, the, the state and the governor enacted a budget that had Prop 98. At about 115.2 billion, revenues are better. Prop 98 would be 119.2 billion, but again, he's proposing, he's proposing the 117.6 in his budget proposal. Risks. Some things that, that took away some risk actually was eliminating the one time funding, holding up the LCFF. Fully funding the COLA that he's made a commitment to fully fund that statutory COLA, which is currently estimated at 2.43% for next year. Replenishing the Prop 98 reserve for times of uncertainty because they did utilize the Prop 98 reserve in the current, in last year and this year. And like that bottom line says, the greatest risks are really local. We don't have a lot of control over our revenue. Our revenue is of course generated by students, our kids coming to school. And, and that is our major revenue driver. We have control on the expenditure side of our budget, where we choose to prioritize our expenses based on our board district goals and the needs of our kids. This is to look back on the LCFF. If you recall, we were a revenue limit state way back when Governor Brown got the LCFF in, in the 13, 14 year. And the orange bars, those represent the amount of new money from the state that flowed into the LCFF each year. You'll see 2021, of course, that was, we kind of forget about that one. But recently, the last, last two years, significant investments. With the exception of this year, the 1% COLA, not a significant investment of new money in the LCFF. But next year, about an additional 4.2 billion toward LCFF funding to fund the projected 2.43% COLA. And COLA on some different programs. Again, I apologize, this is a busy chart, but this is the LCFF funding factors. These are the things that every district in the state of California works with. You get a base grant for your students, then of course you'll see the 2.43% COLA represented there. Then, then that adds to the base grant, you get a grade span adjustment in the, in the TK through three and the nine through 12 to support class size reduction and CTE programs. And that, that settles you in on your adjusted base grants, kind of like taxes, you have your income, you have your gross income, you have your adjusted gross income, it just changes with each step. The one thing I do want to point out on this slide is the TK add on per ADA down there, 6,404. If you read the footnote down at the bottom, I apologize, it's small print. That's inclusive of an additional $3,200 per TK ADA. That's a proposal, it is not statutory. The governor has pledged to fund the reduction in class size ratios from 12 to one to 10 to one. Right now, we have 24 students, a maximum of 24 students in our TK classes with two staff, a teacher and a parent educator. Where we are required next year at full TK implementation, because it's now a full grade level. To be 10 to one in our TK classrooms. So this is the governor's proposal to fund that increase in required staffing to lower that ratio. Yes.
So if he is saying. That the addition, there will be an additional three, 3,252 per student. To reduce the class size from 12 to one to 10 to one. It will allow you to have additional staffing, but will it allow you to have additional classrooms?
That money is not designed to pay for classrooms, it's really designed to pay for the staffing. And we are, we are planning on that additional staffing as we move to next year.
Will you have enough rooms to house all the staffing for the full day? Because the TK will be a full day, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, will you have enough classrooms? Let's say all of a sudden, our numbers will exponentially. Would you have enough rooms? To house the 10 to one? And a teacher, or you're gonna split a room and have two teachers with accordion door? To separate them, but they're in one room divided up, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure it out.
We're currently running 18 transitional kindergartens in our district across our 10 elementary schools. We have about 391 or 392 transitional, 391, okay. Transitional kindergarten students. So we arrived at, we arrived at our number for next year, and I'm going to talk a math formula here. We currently have 800 kindergartners in our district this year. So we're assuming we have 800 eligible TK students out there in our boundaries, that's an assumption. Even the demographers will tell you that's your best guess, because it's really hard to track TK kids and kinders. This current year is only five sixths of a year, 10 out of 12 months. So if you take that 800, multiply by five sixths and then multiply by the factor that the state was using in their assumptions of how many transitional kindergarten. Students would attend at 60%. 800 times five sixths times 60% is 400, we have 391. So we're pretty spot on with that in the current year. Next year, we will move to a full grade level. If we make the assumption that we have 800 student cohort out there in the community for our TK kids. At 60%, that's 480. That's an assumption. I arrived at that number, Mr. Harrison arrived at that number using different means to get there. So we're pretty confident that that's our, and I hate to say it, that's our best guess at this point of how many TK students will show up. At the 20 to, 20 to two or 10 to one staffing, that's going to require 24 classrooms. We're currently running 18. I'm currently building 12. That would make 30 classrooms available to TK if no other grade level expands or contracts. In our elementary schools. So I'm going to stand up here and say, yes, I, I believe we will have enough classrooms for the TK students that show up next year. Unfortunately, we may not have enough room at their home school based on their attendance area. Because we were not able to expand every campus in the number of classrooms. That's why we chose Sandia on the south end of town, Desert Knolls on the west side of town. And Yucca Loma, kind of in the middle to the east, to the north part of town. So I'm, I'm stretching, I know it's a stretch, but that's our plan for TK for next year. So I believe for next year will be in good shape. This is just a quick calculation, this is an average funding in ADA, as you know. The LCFF has different grade span amounts, supplemental and concentration, that's unique to us. The grade span adjustments in kindergarten, in TK through three and nine through 12. That's, so that's an average number of LCFF funding per student, that's our projection for next year based on the LCFF calculator that we use. And we're projecting 12,490 ADA, that's our actual projected 2025, 26 ADA. Our funded ADA in this year is actually last year's P2. Because this year's P2 is going to be lower, so we're funded on the prior year guarantee. Next year, we're projecting more ADA than this year, so we're utilizing next year's ADA number in this calculation. So about $188 million in LCFF revenue, remember, that's base grant. That's TK add on, that's CTE add on, that's supplemental funding, that's concentration grant funding. That's a transportation add on and the additional TK add on, that's the governor is proposing to enhance. And we're not assuming that higher number yet in this calculation. So if that higher number comes to fruition, that total LCFF number will go up because of the additional money for TK. This slide is a tough one, it really shows the, the augmentations that the state has thrown at the LCFF compared to what the real increase was. So back in 22, 23, they threw, they threw about 13.26% new money at the LCFF. But it only raised the allocations by about 12.3. And that's because of declining enrollment, expiration of certain COVID ADA policies. So for this year, they threw a 1% at the LCFF, the 1% COLA. But districts that are in declining enrollment, which is unfortunately true through most districts throughout the state of California. A 1% increase in the COLA does not necessarily reflect to a 1% increase in funding. Next year, 2.43%, don't know what it's going to be for us, using that number on the previous slide, that 188 million. That 2.43% COLA for us turns into about a 2.2, 2.1, 2.2% increase in actual dollars. This talks a little about the one time money that has flowed in. And I'm going to go quick because this presentation is getting long. Lot of one time federal and state money, huge investment by the state in 22, 23. All of that's expired, so if we didn't, if we didn't use it, we sent it back and we did not send any back. School services really wanted to caution districts on using one time or short term fund to pay for people. So they pulled some data back, this is the 22, 23. About 6% of the salary and benefit expenses across the state of California, and this is, this is across the entire state. So that's $4.4 billion. Were paid with those one time monies. So you'll see down there in the lower left hand corner, school services operational advice is to really be wary of paying people with one time or limited dollars. You have to have a plan moving forward. And that could possibly mean position reductions, attrition, those types of things to, to capture. Or you identify an ongoing funding source to take over those positions. This one really quick, there's some things that I've talked about, the TK add on, the discretionary block grant. A couple of other items I didn't detail. They're not huge, but they're pieces, school services recommending that none of that be included in your second interim financials or your budget adoption process. Until they're actually adopted at the state. The only thing school services is recommending, which is consistent with our past practice, would be the 2.43% COLA for next year. And we are including that in our multi-year projections. Again, a busy slide, just talks about COLAs in the out years, looks at last year, 1.07, next year, 2.43, 3.52, 3.63 and 3.49. Which I guarantee you will all be different by the time we get to those years. But these are the planning factors that districts will use in multi-year projections. Slide that just talked about what's next, a lot of negotiations up there, the next big milestone, of course, is the May revision. That's when more things will be negotiated, argued, agreed upon, the governor's May revision comes out. And we will build our proposed budget based on the May revision in terms of revenues. Thank you. Any questions?
Have a question about the California lottery, how much of it are we actually getting?
Lottery revenue? I don't know that number off the top of my head, Ms. Opara, but I will find that out and I will provide it to Kylie to provide to the board.
Thank you.
Certainly. No questions, thank you.
Okay, so now you have the review and receive comment on facility master plan.
Yes. Last meeting, I handed out a draft facilities master plan to give you the opportunity to peruse, take a look. I did ask Zoe, she reworked the cover, put some more pictures of all of our schools on there, so it's not just one giant one, looks a little bit better. Reworked the page with our board members to reflect our current seated board members. She added some photos throughout the document, but didn't make any material adjustments. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions or any comments the board may have. My plan is to incorporate any suggestions and then bring it back to, for your consideration at the March meeting for adoption.
I don't know, did you guys, if you guys have your book, I'm on page 47. But I was looking through the facility needs assessment. And. Our two schools that are ranked the lowest or needing the most. Appear to be Phoenix Academy Lower Campus is the number one or number 18, depending on how you. And Desert Knolls. So I just would make the comment that I think we definitely need to address. The facility needs based on that assessment as well.
Great, thank you. No other questions or comments? Great, thank you, I will work with Zoe to make sure and complete any other edits. And you will see it again in March for your consideration for adoption. Thank you.
Kylie, do we have any public comments?
We do, we have one.
As provided on our public comment card, speakers are requested to limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. If more than one person wishes to speak on the same topic, subsequent speakers should limit their remarks to new information only. Public comments shall be limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per item. And we have David Hernandez.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just for the sake of authenticity, I'm here to talk about salary and benefits. It's the negotiation season and I'm here also on behalf of service to other teachers. Who I know that, you know, what I'm going to say is going to resonate with them as well, so here I am speaking on, on their behalf. So my name is David Hernandez and I've been a math teacher at Apple Valley High. So my name is David Hernandez, and I've been a math teacher at Apple Valley High School for about five and a half years, 13 years in total. I'm here to notify just the community and anybody here and on YouTube about the differences of pay between Apple Valley Unified School District, Hesperia Unified School District, and Victor Valley Union High School District. I did provide Kylie a handout, which all of you will get, it's a pretty nice-looking spreadsheet, color-coded, it's really nice. But yeah, it shows the salaries for this current 24-25 school year for the three districts that I mentioned. Specifically, it focuses on the teachers on the last column, and that means teachers with the highest education level, which gives you higher compensation, basically it's a master's degree. So looking at that, the first year starts off with Apple Valley teachers getting 2,600, about $2,600 less than a teacher from Hesperia. And $6,400 less a year than teachers in Victor Valley. However, this difference widens as we approach year 10, with a teacher at Apple Valley Unified School District making $18,000, a little bit more than that, a year less than a teacher at Victor Valley. And in Hesperia, those teachers make 20,000, about $20,700 more than we do here at this district. So for those teachers within this one-to-10-year experience bracket, this difference is critical when you consider where to plant roots and retire. Because that's the, basically 10 years is how much years you can carry over to a district as experience. In fact, I witnessed several teachers leaving this district to work at these neighboring districts, as well as even now, currently, teachers are looking to apply to these districts in that year bracket. I believe teachers, you know, in this one-to-10-year bracket, look at this difference in pay and really don't feel appreciated. Many of these newer teachers are also starting families. With nearby districts paying their insurance in full, our district can also move in that direction as a gesture of goodwill for families as well. The reason why I'm focusing on the newer teachers' pay is because just being a reflective coach, being a mentor teacher, I work with these teachers a lot, and they opened my eyes to a lot of the work that they do. Going through school, best practice, learning best practices, refining their curriculum, and et cetera, it's a lot of work. And I'm thankful I could help them, but when you lose teachers, newer teachers to districts that pay more, they don't make that choice lightly. They love our school district, they love our schools, they love our students, they love the staff and community. It's just they can't ignore the drastic difference of pay, and have to make that difficult choice to leave for the best interests of them and their families in this economy. Well, that's it, thank you for your time and the work that you do every day, I appreciate your consideration in the matter, thank you.
Board comments, Anita Tucker. Thank you for your comments. Renee Longshore.
Yes, thank you, I know it takes courage to stand.
Maria Oakparra.
I have no comments.
Yeah, just thank you for coming. All right, we will hold a public hearing to receive comments on the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency, or CALSHAPE Plumbing Services Contract. I now open the public hearing regarding the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency, CALSHAPE Plumbing Services Contract, time opened 8:55 PM.
Ms. Buchanan, if you don't mind, I'll make some comments during the public hearing. The CALSHAPE program was established by legislation, really coming out of the pandemic to assist schools in energy efficiency matters, in terms of water efficiency, and also a ventilation program to increase filtering, better ventilation for classrooms. This particular public hearing is related to an item later on the agenda to consider entering into an agreement with EMCORE Mesa Energy for some plumbing fixture upgrades, water efficiency upgrades. So we were just required to hold a public hearing to collect public comment on that proposed agreement.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board regarding the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency, CALSHAPE Plumbing Services Contract?
I have no question.
Are there any public comments regarding the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency, CALSHAPE Plumbing Services Contract?
I have received none.
Hearing no further public comment, I now close the public hearing for the board regarding the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency, CALSHAPE Plumbing Services Contract, and 8:57. All right, discussion-action items, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees discuss and take action on the following items. So one, approve the revised cover and signature page of the Apple Valley Unified School District Governance Handbook. Two, include newly-elected Board of Trustee members Anita Tucker and Renee Longshore. Get a motion, okay, move by Maria, and a second?
Second, Anita.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to start some discussion on this.
Okay.
There is a section of the handbook that talks about making any sort of response to public comment. I know as a board, we're asked if we are interested in making public comment. I would like our Governance Handbook to be able to allow appropriate response to any public comment.
All right, is there any discussion on that?
Are you wanting to amend the motion for that?
Yes.
Just for clarification, is there language within this that you're proposing we change? Just so I can make note of which language you're wanting to change.
Yes, thank you. It is found on page 10, under the topic of managing difficult topics. It states, as the last two sentences, "The board will not respond to questions or statements made by members of the audience. Only the chair will respond to public comment during the meeting, and only if warranted." And I believe it shows dignity to people who stand to express their opinions or point of view as a board to be able to respond in an appropriate manner, and not just stay silent.
Legally, do we have? There is a bit of a barrier, if it's not agendized, correct?
For making an amendment?
For, no, for responding to public comments.
Well, this is a best practice. California School Boards Association says this is a best practice, it's in here because of that. I don't have legal reference to it, I am more than willing to seek legal on it. I would not recommend changing it without doing those things and clarifying what could be responded to. I have requested, because of a conversation I did request from a retired superintendent, if they could get me some lists of things people could say just beyond "thank you", that could be appropriate, that person has been out of the country for the last three weeks, so I haven't gotten that. But I will continue to move down that pathway. My recommendation would be, since this is on a discussion-action for no changes from the last board meeting when it was for a discussion about changes, for any amendments, that we bring it back after seeking that guidance, and some potential options for being there.
I think, based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like when somebody speaks at the podium and has a comment about whatever the issues may be, that the board is seeking to simply acknowledge that they were heard. We are not making a comment regarding their point. We are not responding to the issues that they have said, but just to give them the dignity of saying, "We heard you, and we are going to take your, whatever you've said on that advisement." And then when we can deliberate privately as a board, then we'll deliberate. But we will not respond to what the person has said, we can at least acknowledge that we've heard it.
Did you, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what you were like, okay.
Yes.
So we'll need a motion to table this for future day? Or we have to vote on this no first and then, or?
Well, you've made a motion, you've seconded it to approve it with the new signatures, and
Are we able to approve the signature page?
You are.
And then bring the other back for the amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, so what we would do is, as of right now, the item is proposed based off of last meeting's recommendations to bring it forward to approve only the revised cover and signature page. No body of the actual document was changed beyond those. So we can approve those changes, and then take the section on page 10, I think it was managing difficult topics, or difficult situations, the last two sentences, and then we can bring that back.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor of approving the revised cover and signature page?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, number two, approve the certificated and classified personnel actions as listed. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay, Anita's, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, approve the recommendations for requested leaves as noted.
So moved.
All second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Number four, we're going to approve the recommendation of the administrative hearing, chairperson effective immediately on expulsion case EXP number 19, 2024-25. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, for number 20, we have a readout.
In expulsion case number 20, 24-25, to amend the hearing panel recommendations to read as follows. That the student be expelled to SBCSS Vala County Program for the remainder of the 2024-25 spring semester, and a suspended enforcement of expulsion to Apple Valley High School for the 2025-26 fall semester. The student is to complete the terms and conditions of their rehabilitation plan prior to the end of the 2025-26 fall semester.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All second, any discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no, no, okay, expulsion step number five, 2024-25. And that's to approve the recommendation of the administrative hearing chairperson effective immediately. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And annual review AR number 10, 2024-25.
So moved.
Yes, yeah, and a second, so who, the motion was Anita, second was?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, adopt, so number five, adopt resolution 24-25-13, making findings in regards to the savings realized by the installation of high-efficiency plumbing fixtures at Apple Valley Unified Schools, and approve the services agreement with EMCORE Mesa Energy for the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency CALSHAPE Plumbing Program.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? That was what Mr. Schillenberg was discussing, correct? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Number six, approve the implementation of the Public Agency Retirement Services Supplemental Retirement Plan. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Second, and discussion.
You'd like to approve it without discussion, that's always your Let me grab the screen here really quickly, again, I do have some information to share with the board regarding the PARs post-analysis of the enrollment. If the board recalls back in November, you should have a copy of this in that paper clipped pack, and it was attached to the agenda item for your review prior to this evening. If you recall, the board approved offering a contingent supplemental retirement program offering to all of our employee groups back in November. PARs mailed enrollment packets to all eligible employees in all of our employee groups, held a couple of informational meetings, one of which I attended, and saw a lot of smiles as they were turning in their enrollment packets. No, no one's, there's one. And then the enrollment deadline was January 23rd, and then it, I'll just go through the slides here. Here's the demographics of those that enrolled, we had 76 individuals enroll, 42 certificated non-management, that's our VUDA team, certificated management, we did have two classified non-management, that's our CSA team, CSEA team members, and then of course classified managers. You'll see the average retiree age, retiree service, we got a lot of service, average of 26 years in the teaching side in terms of service to the district, and the average retiree salary. PARs plugs this into their magical computer based on some certain assumptions. They project some savings, before we get to that, you could see on our certificated non-management side, we actually had 121 eligible team members in that group, so 42. That is significantly higher than the enrollment that PARs expected. They expected we'd get maybe 24, we got 42. This happened four years ago, PARs expected we would get the same number, we got a lot. We had over 100 four years ago sign up for a supplemental retirement program across the entire district. But you see the demographics there, what this table illustrates is the projected savings over multiple years based on the number of these positions that we backfill. And that's the key, backfilling or not backfilling positions. Many districts do supplemental retirement programs in times of declining enrollment. It can save reductions in force, commonly known as layoffs. You get teachers that have served a long time, veterans, that are very highly paid, and you either don't backfill them, or you hire a brand-new teacher at the entry level. There's a large differential in salary. There's a large differential in salary. And even with paying that salary and the cost of the supplemental retirement program, there's still a savings. So you can look at that chart, in year one, if we backfilled every single one of the positions with an average new hire, PARs projects we would still save about $1 million, year one. You go down to the bottom of that first column, if we backfill half of those positions with an average new hire, PARs projects we could save close to $3 million. That's just year one. If we don't backfill any, well, that's not an assumption PARs ran for us, but the savings would be larger than that $3 million if we don't backfill any of those positions and utilize existing staff to fill the assignments that were vacated by these individuals. On the management side, we had to, not a big group to begin with, only nine eligibles, and PARs actually thought we might get one. We got two. Not a whole lot of savings here if we, well, no savings if we backfill both of those positions. Couple hundred thousand if we don't backfill those two positions in the first year. Again, these are projections. Classified non-management, so here's our CSEA group. We had 115 eligibles, we had 29 enrollees. Shocked we didn't capture a couple of the, close to 70, but they gotta love what they're doing. On the classified side, not as significant a savings on the classified side, mainly due to not as large a differential between step one and step five on the classified salary schedule. But if we backfill only half of those positions, the projected savings in year one is $800,000. And you can see the rest of the table there, depending on how many positions are backfilled. Classified management, had 10 eligibles, had three sign up, all three of which are in my nutrition services department. That hurt. Some great folks that have been running a wonderful program for our kids, but they decided it was, it was, it was time. A little bit of savings if we only backfill two. Unfortunately, these positions really most likely will need to all be backfilled, so there's really no savings on this. But these positions are not in our general fund. They're in Fund 13, our nutrition services fund. But one of the caveats I want to make sure everybody understands, the supplemental retirement benefit payments that we make to fund the annuities, we cannot use Fund 13 monies for those payments. That is not an allowable use. So the general fund will make the payments for these retirees into their annuities. I wanted to make sure that was clear. And that's it. And as you see, the item, the recommendation is to approve the PAR supplemental retirement program for all employee groups as presented.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Number.
Leslie, I'm surprised you're not texting everybody right now. I did not build the agenda.
Okay, number seven, formally acknowledge receipt and review of the 2023-2024 audit report as prepared by Nigro and Nigro P.C.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Should we motion?
Yes.
So we can discuss. Okay, can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay, now, discussion.
Thank you, I apologize. This is a report on last year's audit. I'm proud to say it was a great audit, was clean, what's called an unmodified opinion, which is, reflects wonderful on the fiscal services department, particularly the director of fiscal services. This is her baby. She does not want audit findings, and she achieved that for the 23-24 fiscal year. This is an outside audit. They express an independent opinion on our financial statements and compliance with programs, mainly our federal and state programs. Because as you know, federal programs come with a lot of strings, as do state categorical programs. You do not have a printed copy of the audit, but it was attached to the item, so you had the opportunity to view. In that stapled group of papers, the presentation for the audit, there are some pages in the back. For instance, on the bottom of this page, I call out a fund balance comparison, table A3 on page seven. I did include that as part of your packet, along with the outstanding long-term debt schedule. Table A5 on page nine is included as part of that stapled packet you have with you this evening. But an unmodified opinion is a clean opinion. Management's discussion and analysis is pages four through 10. It's really those tables. It's trying to put a discussion of the audit into layman's terms, into normal terms, and hence tables that are easy to read that really summarize the district's financial position. The government-wide financial statements, if you're an accountant, you'll love it. If you're not, you might not. I did include page 15, the audited fund activity. That shows all of our operating funds, our general fund, Fund 01, preschool, adult education fund, nutrition services fund, facilities funds. The audited activity is there on page 15. And then the notes. The notes on page 17 through 51 are very detailed explanations of the processes the auditor takes in examining those different programs for compliance, explains some of the numbers, how they arrive at those numbers, explains the, some of the GASB rules, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board that we're held to. So it's, it's a great read. I'm just gonna stop there. Supplementary information, pages 52 through 68. You'll see they're listed there. The one thing I did include, page 62, that's a schedule of instructional time. If you recall, we only attended school for 179 days in the 23-24 school year. We had a day off because of Hurricane Hillary. We did have a J-13A waiver, the board approved that. That was submitted to the county schools office. They approved it, submitted it to CDE on our behalf, and it was approved. So we did not have to make up that school day. We were credited with that. And that schedule of instructional time that's included shows that 179 days of school and one day J-13A credit. Findings and questions cost, this is Cindy's favorite slide, none, none, none. It's a good thing. We did have a finding last year. Not because of anything we did, it's because the CDE was really slow in approving a J-13A waiver for a single-day closure at one of our schools when a water line broke. The board approved that, we submitted it. I believe the approval from CDE came about eight months after the fact, eight or nine months after the fact, after the audit deadline. So the auditor's required to write a finding because Sycamore Rocks didn't go to school enough. It was a loss of apportionment of a little over $450,000, but that did not occur because that J-13 waiver was approved. So this finding was resolved. We just, has to appear in the audit as a previous finding that was addressed. That's it. Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. In the findings, it did make a suggestion about student funding.
ASB.
ASB.
Yes.
Did you have opportunity to have some, something to rectify that? In terms of receipt, in terms of having no balance? There was one of them that said it didn't have, no money left.
Yes, that was a, yes. A club account was overdrawn.
That's correct.
Yes.
Did you have a remedy that you had to have in place to show them that you, you heard them and there's a remedy in place?
We, we, the, the letter in the last two pages of the audit really addresses student body funds. We don't have to show a remedy as we do for a finding in our financial statements, but we still do like to re-educate the individuals at the schools running the ASB programs, provide them some training if necessary. This, this was a, this, I believe, is something that's very easy to solve. With an overdrawn club account, the club may have a fundraiser planned later in the year. That's something to take into consideration, that may be coming up. Or the general ASB account always has the ability to loan clubs funds. And they can do that loan, and then the club can earn that back and then reimburse the general ASB. So there are mechanisms in place, and we do not have to provide to the auditor a correction, a plan for correction for those particular problems. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees consider approving a number of agenda items as a consent list. Consent items are routine in nature and can be enacted in one motion without further discussion. This procedure conserves meeting time for a full discussion of significant issues. Consent items to be approved in one motion, one through 11.
I would like to pull two items. Item number five and item number six.
Are there any others? All right, can I get a motion to approve consent item number one, three, four, and seven through 11?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, let's go ahead and start with, we'll go numerical order. Is that all right? Item number two.
Item number two, that is the item on probation department. I am aware of the fact that we have always had probation in the past. However, my question is on probation officer activities, B2 and B5. B2 stated that the probation officer will receive referrals from teachers and administrators using the targeted student guidelines defined below in section B on students who have demonstrated violent and negative behavior and for whom traditional disciplinary measures have not been effective. The reason I pull that is teachers have enough to do. They don't need to give you, give a referral to probation. Probation is, is on campus to handle students who have already gone through the court system. So to have a teacher get the responsibility of assigning a student to probation is a little bit disconcerting for me. That is B2. And if I may, I also said, it says on B5, it says probation will take a lead role in ensuring open communication between probation and school systems. At the initial interview with referred students, the probation officer will obtain a signed release of information from students and students placed on informal or formal probation. The probation officer will review grades, attendance, juvenile citations, including traffic community, service assignments, and completion of terms and condition of probation. The probation officer will assist by notifying school officials or the appropriate juvenile court when the terms and conditions are not met. We are in the business of serving minors. Who is this student who is going to be giving a release of information to probation? What is wrong with, what are we talking about here? I'm a little bit confused. You're gonna have a student give a release to probation to have access to their record when that child has a parent and that teach, that child has a school, a school personnel, but you're giving that responsibility to the student to give that permission? So I'm a little bit, I'm very uncomfortable with those two pieces of, of information that is there. And I don't know how the rest of you feel. There's quite a few, a few conditions for this probation service, and I'm, I'm very uncomfortable. And I wanted to go on record that I'm uncomfortable.
So typically, students that are placed on probation through the court system already have a release that is in place. This is responding to that release that is put in place when they are put on probation where their parents are part of the system. We are more than willing to have probation come and do a presentation to this. We have had probation officers for, as you mentioned, for many years within our system. They do far more than probation discussions with students. They actually have access to information that our police department cannot access. They can access it, but they can't appropriately access it. Probation can. The other thing that they do is they often go out and do home visits on delinquent students that are not on probation. They go out during the school hours, which keeps our police officers on campus and other staff, and they check in on them and they build rapport and relationships. We've had one probation officer that has floated between two sites, even though we've had two officers. He has been assigned on both our high school sites over the last six years that I've been superintendent. And every time we get him, we are extremely fortunate because he's out in the community, meeting with families and making sure they have their needs met. And so while it says teachers and administrators can do referrals, our administration is who does the referrals. We don't ask teachers to do referrals if there's a concern with a student. Teachers tell administrators, administrators work with probation department. We often have students that are assigned to us that have probation that we cannot gain direct information about the conditions of their probation, such as who they can and cannot be in contact with. And without the link to our current probation officers, it's very difficult to get ahold of somebody in the field and ask them to get us the information. And so they act as liaisons even when it isn't their case or a situation that they're handling. And they do help us with placement of students at times.
I did hear you, but it says, it says here very clearly that the referral will come from teachers and administrators. If the referral is coming from administrators, it needs to be stated very clearly that it's coming from administrators. But once you place teachers in that situation and a teacher writes a referral, I'm not sure there is protection for that teacher that has just done a referral to send a kid to be part of a probation. So I want that burden taken off a teacher's plate. They have enough to do already. The second thing that it says here, it says, at the initial interview with the referred student, the probation officer will obtain a signed release of information from students. It didn't say from parents, it said from the student. And that is very, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm reading it as a parent who has a child in the system, and I'm saying, you can't get permission from my child, it's still a child. I want you to get permission if the court has given you permission. Please get the court's permission. If the principal who's in charge of the school has given you permission, I need to be informed of it. But I do not appreciate the fact that somebody is saying that a student will give permission. How about a third grader? A second grader? That's still a student in our system. Do they, are they supposed to give permission to a probation officer simply because he has a uniform? We have a district police on campus. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around all of this, the guideline. I'm reading the guideline. I specifically requested that this guideline be brought in because I really want people to hear it. It just is not adding up.
I have a question, and I don't know if you know the answer. Is this, for B2, her concern with the referrals from teachers and administrators, is this an actual, like, official referral form? Or could this just be a teacher who maybe knows the students having a difficult time and might have that relationship with the probation officer and say, maybe you could call this one in for?
That's the typical, they pass them on the campus and they say, we're struggling with this kiddo, can you meet with them? I, I see a teacher in the audience shaking her head ass that that is what is going on.
I was gonna say, that was my.
I was gonna say, that was my, yeah, my relationship with our probation officer years ago at the comprehensive high school. That there was no form for us anyway. It was just kind of, yeah. If we knew someone was having difficulty and there was a group that the probation officer was leading.
Correct.
Okay. So I have a comment for that, too. So is there any way we could state? Maybe next to teacher informal and next to administrator formal, so it's defined?
This is not our contract. This is the county's contract that they provide to us. I'm more than willing to reach out to them and see if they will amend this. Typically, contracts are contracts, and they don't typically amend when they're providing a service like this. But I'm more than willing to ask.
Do we know on B5 whether or not they are obtaining release of information from minors? Like, without, do we know that?
I don't believe they are. That's not been the practice. I'm looking at Adam and, and Brian in the audience. This is typically because they are already on probation when they arrive on the campus. Anytime a probation officer is going to interact with a student that is not one that's on their case carrier, they're gonna work with the administration who's already made contact with the family and indicated that this is a resource for them.
I think Ms. Akpara's hesitance is with the, the part that says with referred students. So if a teacher refers them and it's minor, we want to be able to protect their rights to sign a legal document. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just, I just don't want a child signing off and saying, just because you have the uniform and the child is now scared and he says, go ahead. You know, and you've taken the right away from a parent. You've taken the right away from, you know, we are, we are in local parentis. Our job is to protect the child on behalf of the parent. And if we are sitting here and, and probation sends this, which is a normal thing that they will send anywhere they want. But this is now a school district and we service TK to 12th grade. And a kid who is in TK who is throwing a desk in the classroom and a probation officer comes in and has it, I'm just going to the absolute extreme.
Yeah.
So you go to that absolute extreme. He's still a student. And it's, I know, and, and the probation officer is going to say, well, I got the, I got the permission from the student to go, I get, I got the release from the student. That is unacceptable. Whatever we put on paper is what we are going to go by. So either this goes back to probation to put something on paper that I, we can live, I can live with. Because I have a duty to protect the children in Apple Valley School District. And right now, I don't feel like I'm protecting them based on this kind of verbiage that is on this anthem. So I'm uncomfortable.
There is no change to the verbiage from the previous contracts that have been approved, just so that this is not an addition. This is not new. But I'm more than willing to contact them and if the rest of the board, if that's the direction of the quorum.
I, I would, I would appreciate that, yes.
So we will need to amend it to table it? So that we can request?
You can just not approve it. You don't have to take a vote at all on it. It's, it's agendized with no vote. It goes no place. And we'll make a plan to bring it back if we can get the amended. If we don't get the amended, will we, is it, well, I guess I'll ask that question later. Thank you.
All right, item five.
I would like to see if we could table item five until the February 13th meeting, when we have a full board, because I'm an employee of Cal State San Bernardino. I would have to abstain from this, and I think it would be better to bring it back when we have a full slate of people so that we would have a quorum to approve this or vote on it. So I move that we table it until the February 13th special board meeting.
We do still have a quorum. Correct? If you abstained?
Yes.
You do have a quorum. I'm, I'm also an employee of the, of the school, of the university. However, I would, for us to go forward even to have this conversation, I will also request that we get our attorney to be present in closed session to explain to us why a sitting board member who does not have any students in Apple Valley School District could not vote.
So this would not be a closed session discussion. This could be a open session discussion, and I can ask one of the legal counsel from Ms. Akpara just requested Atkinson-Andelson. I do have a previous opinion from Maggie Chidester's office in 2023, when I had two different conflicts of interest that I requested for different reasons. And we do have an opinion in 2023. So if the rest of the board would like me to move forward with having an attorney at the next board meeting, I don't know that I can likely get them at the February 13th meeting, so it would be March.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Number six.
Okay. I would like, I don't know the correct way to do this, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm really excited to see Beauty and the Beast at Phoenix Academy. But I don't feel it's our place to approve the script. I think that we hire incredible English drama teachers at our schools. I feel that we have exceptional administrators, and I think that we need to trust our employees and our staff to have good judgment, to choose correct plays. While I understand that we approve textbooks, we don't improve, we don't approve other instructional materials like supplemental. We don't approve music pieces. And I think that we should trust our teachers and our administrators and approve it the way we would approve regular supplemental materials.
I do know that this was the first year that we've had any scripts requested of us to approve. And I, I would agree with Ms. Tucker. It does seem to be out of our purview, like
I'll remind the board that the reason we started doing this was because we had a board concern about a play that was done last year. And a request that those scripts be approved through a process, and that's why we began doing this.
Was that during a public session?
Yes, it was.
Are we able to change it?
Absolutely.
This is a different board, so we can
Would you all be okay with us approving Phoenix for this time so that they can move forward? Because I'm sure they're on a timeline with renting scripts.
Absolutely.
And then we can move forward with the other directive? Okay, so.
So I so move that we approve item number six.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion anymore? No? A call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed?
Just for clarity, I just want to make sure that out of the three items that were pulled, number two, number five, and number six, item number two and number five were not voted on at all, and item number six was approved.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think we're at the end here. Future items. Do any members of the board have any future items?
No.
There being no further business to come before the Board of Trustees, it is recommended that the meeting be adjourned. I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys.